Go ahead and call this meeting of the Uba City Council to order. I have some virtual information to share. Governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor has also issued executive order N-3320, which directs Californians to follow the public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are a top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in our meeting? This meeting is utilizing Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Escondola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
All right. We will have invocation inspiration by the vice mayor, and if I could ask Manny Cardoza to lead us in the pledge after that, but please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for this time of the year, spring. It's a new birth. It's reemerging from the winter. And Father, we just thank you now because the world just celebrated the newness of Jesus rising from the dead on the third day. Father, we just pray that you will just give us wisdom, give us clarity, and give us hope for the future in making all of our decisions better for the city of Uba City and its residents in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to have some live bodies in front of us again. First item, well, let me go back here. Agenda modifications and the approval of the agenda, and I believe we're going to have something from our city manager?
Through the mayor. Item 12, we'd like to continue to the next regularly scheduled meeting on April 20th, 2021.
Everybody okay with that? Okay, so be it. Next item's item number one under presentations. This is a presentation about the Regional Housing Authority, and it's going to be by their director, Gus Becerra. Good evening, Gus.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Can you hear me and see me okay?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. So I want to thank you all for the invitation and the opportunity to present on behalf of our agency. Mr. Mayor, you had asked to present and talk a little bit about what our agency, what we do, who we are, you know, with the primary focus, obviously, of what we're doing in Uba City. So with me tonight is Ms. Becky Flores, our Planning and Community Development Manager. Between the two of us, we'll present. So our agency, as you may know, operates in four different counties, but Southern Nevada, Uba, and Colusa. But our genesis was here, in Sutter County, in Uba City through farm labor housing back in the 1940s, post-World War II. And so I want to talk a little bit today about some of our core programs, again, with a primary focus about what we do in Uba City. So next slide, please, Sierra. Our Housing Choice Voucher Program, primarily or most normally known as our Section 8 program. In our four-county region, we administer a little over 1,800 vouchers, with about 540 of those being in Uba City. So that accounts for about 30% of our voucher allocation. The voucher program, as you may know, is HUD-funded program that assists tenants with payments made directly to landlords based on their income. So if they make 80% of area median income or less, you can qualify to participate in this program. Rent payments are roughly structured at 30% of their income, with the difference being paid by HUD directly to the landlord. So as I mentioned, 30% of our program being in Uba City is probably our largest allocation of the program between all of the cities and unincorporated areas of the four counties we serve. Next slide, please. Another program that's within the voucher program, so it's within the 1,800-plus vouchers, are VASH vouchers. These VASH vouchers are administered in partnership and coordination with the VA, and they're restricted to veterans only. Veterans of our military who are getting case management services through the VA. And this program allotted vouchers to Sutter County, 29 of them, and the majority of those, because the majority of the housings in Uba City, are used in Uba City. And they came when our VA clinic was inaugurated here in Uba City. So the timing of those vouchers were great because we have a local VA clinic serving our veterans. And so those are really vital, the veterans that need case management that have served our country. Next slide, please, Sierra. Our Family Self-Sufficiency Program, also a program within the voucher program. This is a pretty cool program that coordinates case management services for folks that are looking to get back into the workforce and get off of assistance. And so our staff works closely with, like, the Sutter County One Stop and workforce development to connect them with services and case management to, whether it be educational goals or, you know, help with their resumes and things like that, to primarily get folks back into the workforce. And then they, so to speak, graduate from this program. And once they get off of assistance, HUD rewards them with a payment of the difference of when they entered the program and how much HUD was paying on their behalf to landlords for rental assistance. And then as they work and their income continues to grow and their rental assistance continues to drop till they get to zero, HUD has a formula where they will reward this individual or family for getting off of assistance and then being 100% self-sufficient. It's a pretty cool program. Whenever we have graduates of this program, we bring them to our Board of Commissioners for a small presentation, a photo opportunity, and present them the check, you know, for them to be on their own. So it's a really cool program. Next slide, please, Sierra. Another one of our core programs is public housing, also a HUD program. The Housing Authority has three public housing properties, two of which are in Uba City and one in the city of Live Oak. The two in Uba City, and you can go to the next slide, Sierra, and we could see some photos of them. The two in Uba City, one of them is on Joanne Way, and the other one is inside Richland Housing Community there. As you can see in the photo, the one in the middle, also known as River City Manor, is for elderly and/or disabled. We have 24 units, all one bedrooms. And then the other property of HUD Public Housing are 99 units within Richland. And these are 80% area of median income eligibility or below. And so we have, out of the 99 in Richland, 14 of those for seniors and the rest of them for families, two and three bedrooms primarily, except for the 14 units for seniors. But over on Joanne Way, they're all for seniors and they're all one bedrooms. This particular program, public housing, has historically been a very difficult program to administer for housing authorities because HUD has really cut back on funding, probably starting about 10, 12 years ago. And so it's been very difficult to maintain these properties at a high standard. And as you know, we've come to the city to apply for CDPG grants before. Both of these properties have been beneficiaries of your grant funds to maintain these properties at a high standard. There is light at the end of the tunnel. We have an application into HUD, as our board has supported, to get out of the public housing program altogether. HUD finally has a path and a tool to get us out of this program. We would get vouchers to replace the lack of operating subsidy that we get. Won't affect our tenants at all. They'll still continue to pay 30 to 40% of their income. And they get replaced by vouchers that will allow us to raise the rents to market rents and be able to collect the revenue to reinvest back into the property, of course. Next property, or excuse me, next slide, please, Sierra. USDA Farm Worker Housing is also one of our primary core programs. In Uba City, we have 190 units of year-round farm worker with some partial funding from USDA and then rent revenue coming from the rest. This property is located in Richland Housing. And as you can see from the slide, it has a minimum requirement of farm labor. Now, farm labor, kind of a broad statement. Applicants can work in areas like canneries, obviously, field labor, you know, any type of processing, you know, rice plants, what have you, so dryers, things like that. So it's not just exclusively to field work. And again, we have 190 of those in Uba City for year-round farm labor. Next slide, please, Sierra. This is also farm worker housing located in Uba City, these 79 units of migrant farm worker housing. And so a little bit different from the USDA program, this is a state program that we administer. This is a seasonal program. The state of California owns these buildings we administer it for them, located on Bernard Drive in Uba City. Seasonal being that they operate between the first of May and the end of October. And then the state allows the residents up to a one-month extension, and normally, most of the residents take that extension. So usually, we have residents there from the first of May through the end of November. And again, this is a state-run program that we, or a state program that we administer on their behalf. Next slide, please. Homes to Families, as many of you are aware, these are city-owned properties, single-family properties that the city purchased years ago that we manage on your behalf, ranging from two and four bedrooms. We keep, through the agreement that we have with the city, we keep the rents at an affordable range, ranging from two to four bedrooms, and we have, they're scattered throughout the city. But we have nine of those single-family homes, as you may know. Next slide, Sierra. This other program's the NSP, or Neighborhood Stabilization Program, also a program that we partnered with you at the city. Back when the ARA funds came to the city in, I'm gonna say, probably 2008, 2009, the city received funding and purchased 21 single-family homes and formed a partnership with the city of Live Oak to be the lead agency and therefore purchased these homes, grant-deeded them to the Housing Authority, and then we manage them. And again, we have two to five, we have one five-bedroom unit. Three of those are in Live Oak, and then the other 18 of them are scattered throughout Uba City. This is all a single-family product that we manage. And next slide, please, Sierra. These are other properties that we have in Uba City. Percy Avenue Apartments, eight units, obviously located on Percy, all one bedrooms there, two-story building there. Kingwood Commons on Gray Avenue is a 64-unit property located on Gray Avenue. We have a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms there. Both of those properties, Percy and Kingwood, are multifamily, you know, no restrictions to farm worker, no restrictions to elderly. And then to the right on the slide there is Town Center Senior Manor, located around the corner of Plumas and B in the downtown area. Those are 28 units that are restricted to seniors. We developed that property in the mid-'90s, I believe. And that pretty much covers the brick and mortar that we have in Uba City. Next slide, please, Sierra. And I'm gonna turn this over to Ms. Flores to talk about programs that her department administers.
Okay, thank you, Gus. Again, my name is Becky Flores. Can you hear me okay? Okay, thank you. Let's go over the Planning and Community Development Department functions. Our department contracts with local cities and counties for the administration of single-family housing rehabilitation programs and first-time homebuyer programs. And we also oversee the agency's capital improvement projects for RHA-owned properties. And then we also partner in the development of new affordable housing and the preservation of existing affordable housing. And for those projects, we primarily utilize low-income housing tax credits, and we'll get into that in a little bit. Next slide, please. For the single-family unoccupied rehabilitation program, as I mentioned, that program, we do contract with local cities and counties to administer that. And city of Uba City, we've been administering for quite some time. And just a real quick overview, the program provides low-interest loans to low-income homeowners that need work to be done on their properties, and it also helps to improve the existing housing stock. Next slide, please. The First-Time Homebuyer Program is one that we also administer for some local cities in the region. City of Uba City provides loans to low-income first-time homebuyers. Right now, we're having a little bit of issue with stock in the region, but we do have that program available. Next slide, please. Okay, I believe this is the capital improvement slide. And, you know, the slide you see before you here is a property that is located at the Richland Housing Campus. This is our rural development farm worker housing. And this was built back in the '70s when, you know, the theory was to build affordable housing as cheaply as possible in every way, shape, or form. And as you can see here, these properties did not really hold up over time. And so we worked with USDA to get some funding to renovate them and finish that project. Next slide, please. Here's another before picture, I believe, of the interiors. So you can see, you know, they're pretty outdated. At one point, we had to take these units offline, but now with the renovations, both inside and outside, they're fully restored, fully occupied. Next slide, please. You can see some of the after pictures, all new siding, windows, new roof. On the before slide, we actually had tarps over the roof. That's all, you know, been corrected. Next slide, please. And here's some of the interiors, really nice. We were able to really bring these properties up to a livable standard. Next slide, please. So as Gus mentioned, our mission at the Housing Authority is also to provide affordable housing development. And we do that through partnerships with government agencies, cities, counties, and development partners, both through new construction and rehabilitating existing affordable housing. And we really can't do that on our own. We do rely heavily on partnerships with local cities and counties to bring in the leverage we need to secure the low-income housing tax credits that primarily finance these developments. Next slide, please. So here's, the next few slides are just some samples of development projects that we've already completed in our portfolio. This was 10 units of new constructed ADA-accessible farm worker housing at the Richland Housing Campus. Next slide. And then this is New Haven Court over on the corner of Percy Avenue and Miles Avenue in Uba City. Hopefully, some of you have driven by there. It's coming along nicely. Next slide, please. Just a little more detail on New Haven Court. It is 40 units, mostly studios and one-bedrooms, permanent supportive housing for persons who are homeless or homeless experiencing mental illness. And we will have onsite case management at this property, as well as supportive services provided through Hands of Hope and Behavioral Health. And the project is almost done. In fact, we expect to wrap up first part of May, maybe second week of May, and we're going through the lease-up process now. Next slide, please. Okay, and as far as projects in the pipeline for Uba City, we do have the Richland Village Project, as I know many of you are familiar with. This is the site plan for that project. Next slide, please. And here are the renderings for that property. Next slide. The project is 176 units, will be zero net energy. We are targeting affordable workforce housing for this property, and we're still about a year or more out from starting construction. We are in the pre-development phase, trying to obtain all the funding that we need to build the project. One of those funding sources is called Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities. And it's a funding source available through the state of California that checks a lot of boxes. It involves a transportation component, as well as pedestrian, bike improvements. Basically, the goal with that program is to get people out of their cars. And we're programming elements into this project in order to achieve that goal. Part of the AHSC funding requires that we reach out to the community, and we've done that in meeting with several local partners and also through the form of a community survey. Next slide, please. Just want to share some of the survey results with you, just to demonstrate the need for a project like this, some of the things that we're hearing. One of the questions asked was, which of the following makes it most difficult to find suitable housing in your community? And overwhelmingly, 48, over 48% of the respondents said housing's too expensive, and we know that. As far as feeling safe in your neighborhood from traffic when you're walking around, over 58% of our survey respondents so far are saying they strongly disagree or somewhat disagree with that statement. So they need to feel safe when they're walking around in the community, another reason why we're trying to incorporate some transportation elements into this project. And then the last highlight here was that we were asking respondents what their number-one goal would be for transportation, and they said that they would like to see bus stops feel safe and comfortable. I believe that's it for my portion, and I'll turn it back over to Gus.
Thank you, Becky. Next slide, Sierra, as we can wrap up here and open it up for questions. And these are just other projects we have in the pipeline that some are under construction, some we're closing on, our financing here really soon, in between April and June. In our neighboring county in Linda, we have two projects that we're breaking ground on, and then in Nevada City, we're breaking ground on another one in June. And then that bottom section, just a bunch of projects we have under pre-development, you know, some in Live, we have one in Live, Plumas Lake, a couple in Wheatland, a couple in Williams, a second phase in Penn Valley, and then another one in Colusa. So we're pretty active developers at the moment, with just, you know, our fingers on a lot of different projects. It's exciting, stressful, rewarding, all at the same time. Next slide, please, Sierra. And this concludes our presentation. Mr. Mayor, member for the council, and be happy to answer any comments, questions, concerns you may have.
I'll start first by thanking you for a very thorough and exciting presentation. It's good to know how many darn things you guys are working on and making, you're making progress on those as well. I'll turn it over to the council first for any questions.
Thank you, Gus, for, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask on the FFS, is that similar to what the Salvation Army does on their family sufficiency program? Because of...
I think so. I'm not familiar with their program, but I believe that was the main goal of, you know, getting folks off of assistance and making them self-sufficient. You know, we've even had some folks, when housing was a little more affordable, move on to homeownership, in some cases coordinating with the city's first-time homebuyer program. Yes, in essence, it's, I believe it's the same thing.
Normally, how many people do you have in that program? Do you know?
Roughly about 100, about 100 folks.
Oh, wow.
Are enrolled in that program. It's HUD. HUD gives enrollees up to five years to complete their goals in order to be available for the reward payment, so to speak, that HUD gives at the end. Some participants complete their goals before that, some of them, it takes them a while, just all depends on where they are. You know, some of them have educational goals that will then lead them to employment, some of them have already maybe fulfilled some education, and they're just, you know, needing to have some case management to brush up on, you know, resume building or, you know, even as simple as getting clothing for job interviews, you know, and so on. Staff tries to coordinate that and help them out. But I think it's a very similar program to what Julius runs over at the Salvation Army.
Right. So the number of 100, do you know how many complete the program successfully about yearly? Do you have a number on that?
We probably have an average of anywhere from five to 10 graduates in a calendar year. Probably a good number.
And how much are they receiving, each person receive, once they complete the program?
You know, I've seen checks as small as a few hundred dollars, and I've seen checks as large as $8,000, $9,000, depending on, you know, how quickly they move up the scale on their income, you know? If they're running off with little to no income and they start, you know, a job that slowly reduces the payment to the landlord and slowly increases their rent payment to the landlord until they get to that zero HUD assistance check. Yeah, we've seen some pretty decent checks.
That's impressive, and the development that you're doing across the region is just amazing. And it's not cheap, so I could imagine the total budget you're carrying there with your team, right? Keeps you all... Thank you so much for the presentation. It was nice to see how, all the great work that you guys are doing.
You're very welcome. Our pleasure.
Yeah, Gus, just real quick, another question. I just want to thank you. If we had part two of our ride-along, we got to tour some of the facilities that you manage and had this presentation, and then some a lot more depth during that ride, and I really appreciate your time. I learned a lot, and thanks again.
Oh, you're very welcome. And we still need to do the part three. You know, you wanted to see the work we're doing up in Nevada County, so we gotta get that on the calendar. Council... And I'd like to open that invitation to any and all council members. Councilmember Kirchner joined us on that ride-along with Councilmember Harris. And so, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Madam Councilmember Escondola, you know, if you'd ever like to get in a car with me and talk about housing for a bit, and, you know, I hope I don't bore you to death, but I'd love to show you around what we're doing in Uba City, what we're planning on doing, and even outside of it. As Councilmember Harris said, we went out to Uba County, went to Live Oak. There's some pretty exciting things, so invitations open.
Thank you. We'll probably take you up on that. Councilman Kirchner, you have any questions over there on TV land?
I don't. Through the mayor, thanks again, Gus, for the tour on the 30th. I appreciate the invite from you and from Councilmember Harris. It was very informative, and thank you for taking the time to do that. Thank you.
My pleasure. You're very welcome.
All right. Any comments from the audience? We have a comment coming your way. Would that be directed towards us or towards Mr. Becerra?
My name is Lawrence Mertz. I live in North Uba City. There we go. Thank you. My name is Lawrence Mertz. I live in North Uba City. I'm concerned about the number of houses you have on the, you control in the Housing Authority here in Uba City. Do you take the loss in tax revenue that those houses do not create and add it to the cost of operating those houses?
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Those houses don't create any tax revenue to run the city, yet they use city services. So I'm curious if the loss in tax revenue is included in the cost of operating those houses and managing them.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, sir, if you're referring to...
540 houses.
The fact that those properties, that we don't pay property taxes, is that...
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Gotcha. Just wanted to make sure I was understanding your question. Yes, so that's one of the tools that allows us to keep the rents affordable, right? If we had to pay property taxes, you know, it'd be very difficult to charge affordable rents. So state law, through their welfare consumption program with properties owned by affordable housing developers, nonprofit affordable housing developers, is a tool that, again, just allows us to keep those rents at an affordable rate for the community.
I can understand the cost of housing in this community. I'm just wondering who's absorbing the loss. It looks like the taxpayers are. Thank you.
Well, we don't operate any of our properties at losses at this point, and we've had to have had a couple, but our other properties that generate a profit keep those properties in check. And so there's kind of our, within our own portfolio is where we cover those losses, if you may.
Any other comments from the audience? Sierra?
No public comment.
All right. All right. Well, we'll conclude. I believe we'll be scheduling you, Gus, for a follow-up on Richland Village. Ms. Flores, Mr. Becerra, thank you so much for taking the time and presenting to us tonight, very thorough, and like I said before, and Councilwoman Escondola mentioned, it's awesome to see how much you're doing in our community. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you again for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. I'm going to back up on the agenda because I forgot, which I tend to do sometimes, not by design, to have the city attorney report out on our closed-session items. Mr. City Attorney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Okay, item number two, COVID-19. This is discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. This will be presented by our city manager, Dave Vaughn.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, here to provide you some updated numbers as of 4:00 PM this afternoon. There were four new confirmed cases here in Sutter County. Our positivity rate, our new cases, is up to 8.9, and our positivity rate is at 4%. As I shared with each of you, we are continuing to be open for business, and we continue to work as a city to serve the citizens. So City Hall is open, obviously our public areas are open, and we're continuing to watch the guidelines that are being brought down by the state so that we can open up for more events.
I understand the police department opened up this week, too, back the lobby?
Yes, we did, the normal hours. The only thing that's different is we do not do fingerprinting without an appointment. You have to have an appointment, but we still do them.
Excellent. So little by little, we're getting back to whatever normal's going to be, and appreciate the work of staff to keep things moving in that direction.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? I'll get to you in just a second. Okay? All right. We do have a speaker card from Courtney Allen. You are welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm Courtney Allen. I live on Franklin Street in Yuba City. I had a few questions for the city manager and also for you, sir. I'm glad that you're here. So I'm sure you guys are aware that the Director of Health Services for the state just released an advisory last Friday, I believe it was, talking about how they recommend not allowing groups of 40 people unless all those people have been vaccinated. And there was also an order about travel, not allowing travel unless you've been vaccinated. And I was wondering, because you guys are following suit due to state orders, what would be the, what would be the kind of game plan for that stuff here in Yuba City? And I had one more, kind of like a tag-along question that I wanted to kind of direct towards you, which is in, I think it was in the last Board of Supervisors meeting, or it might have been the one before, Dr. Lou talked about having specific vaccines for the transient population. And I was wondering how you were planning to distribute those? I was certainly hoping it wouldn't be a situation of tracking people down and forcing them to take a vaccine. So I did just have those questions. I was wondering how those would kind of be carried out here in the community.
Okay, I'll answer those in reverse order. We don't control vaccinations, so that's a county situation. We're not the, we just follow the rules. So at that point, it's really county does the vaccinating, and Dr. Lou's updates will do that. So either through AmpliHealth or through Adventist or through the county agencies, they're the ones who do the vaccinating of residents, whether they're...
Well, I did know that there are certain areas that are city jurisdiction over county, and I do know that that's been an issue with some police officers working with the transient population down at the riverbanks. So I thought that might fall under police jurisdiction.
No.
No, so it'd be the sheriff and deputies.
On the vaccination side, it is, on the vaccinating side, it's the county health, by county health.
Okay.
So county health officers, they manage that health piece.
Okay, and you just do whatever the county does?
Well, we follow what they're recommending, but as far as vaccinations, if folks don't choose to be vaccinated, that's really a person's choice. So we don't, we're not forcing anybody to be vaccinated, so.
I really appreciate that stance. If it was, if it was from the state that said that people were forced to be vaccinated, though...
I'm going to follow what we're directed to do, which is we'll follow what's happening at the county level, but I know if vaccinations, in our opinion, or at least the opinion that we have, is a choice, and we have folks that don't choose to be vaccinated, that's fine.
I really appreciate your opinion, but I think, I think the question was, is if the state directs the county to require everybody to be vaccinated, are you going to follow the county and go back on what you personally believe?
I'll just have to take...
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. That's going to be a policy decision?
That's right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And I think what our city manager has explained is, is that this particular point in time, we're not, we're not working under that edict. We don't force vaccinations. Anything that's medical is coming out of public health. So I think that the simple answer to your question is if you're looking for the city to get involved with whether somebody gets vaccinated or not, that's not a decision that's been in front of us, and if it is, then we'll have to take it up at that particular point in time. But at this point, we're not going to require anybody to do something medically that they don't want to do. That's their choice.
Okay, so you want to enforce the health director of the state and their, what they've recommended?
If they recommend that something happens, then we get to make that choice. They have not recommended that the city, that city residents or cities get involved in the vaccination program. So at this point, we don't have a skinny skin in that battle or any dog in that fight. We're not, as a city of Yuba City, currently requiring anybody to get vaccinated.
I really appreciate that point of view. I'd love to, I'll follow up with all of you tomorrow with the letter from the state Health Department that I would love you guys to read. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Did we get your other questions covered? You had three, I thought.
I think they were guideline questions and...
I believe it was all, it's under the county.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure. Any other comments from the audience? No, no, no. Sierra?
No public comment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. ...
Mayor, Mayor, hold on. I think we have one more public comment.
Appreciate that.
Hey, how you guys doing? I'm Sammy.
Can you state your full name, so I...
Sammy Mendoza.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been living here since 2003. It's been quite some time since I've been in here. But I've been working on a project recently about bringing back business into Yuba City. And, you know, one of the focuses about it is really bringing freedom back to businesses because I've been seeing how a lot of businesses have been being impacted with, you know, these, the COVID regulations and everything that's going on. So my primary question is, you know, this system that we're putting into place, it's essentially going to embrace freedom, to choose for businesses? So essentially, what I'm trying to ask is, if businesses decide to stop following COVID guidelines, masks, social distancing, would there be fines involved with that?
Well, let me, there's a two-part question to that, or two-part answer. Number one is, this city has not been actively enforcing anything that would impact a business's willingness to stay open. Those businesses that have chosen to close or suspend their business have done so generally because of requirements of state licensing, okay? Not any action by the city of Yuba City. Our efforts have always been to educate, inform, and move on. So that's, that's part one to the answer. The other part is, is we're engaged right now with a business retention task force, which sounds similar to something that you might be involved with. The vice mayor, the city manager, and we have a member here in the audience that are on that particular task force. I'm sure if you provide them with your name, they'll be happy to reach out to you and include you in that process. But that's an effort, once again, to try to make sure that the city of Yuba City supports its business and keeps businesses open and keeps people employed.
So again, by supporting the businesses, if they were to choose to not follow the COVID regulations, would you be supporting them in that, in that aspect also? Because, I mean, the limited capacity in a lot of places is very much impacting the revenue streams. And I see that we have a very important opportunity here in Yuba City, that we can be an example of freedom in this county and in this state, because it's obvious that we're just hurting businesses, we're hurting families, we're hurting our community, and quite frankly, I'm sick and tired of it, and I'm pretty sure that a lot of people are also. I mean, it's just, it's just a straight-up show at this point, and I think that people just want to be free. You know, as we go into the spring, you know, we were talking about rebirth earlier. I think it's time that we really start to take a look at the situation and go in another direction, because all we're doing, I mean, if I go down to Sacramento, I see, I see the city in shambles, okay? It's nothing like what I've ever seen before, and that's starting to creep up over here. You know, we're starting to see, you know, a bunch of people that, that don't care about themselves or our city, just coming to our city because there's nothing else to do, a bunch of transient people that have nowhere else to go because they're feeding off from Sacramento. And here, we have an outstanding opportunity to reinvigorate our economy. So I'm just really stuck as to why we continue playing this game when there's so many other things that we could be doing to fortify our city. You know, like I, like I said, I've lived here since 2003. I saw it since it was just a bunch of orchards. And, you know, we've grown a lot, but this is massively impeding our economy. It's massively impeding us, and I don't understand why we continue to do this to ourselves. It's like self-suicide, when we have a business opportunity here where we can open up and be back normal business. You know, I've traveled the country since November twice, and every time I've gone to a conservative state, it's open for business, nothing, just business as usual. You know, people are out having dinner with their families, the entire restaurants are full, they don't care. Things are back to normal, and I don't understand why we're still playing these games. It's just aggravating at this point. So, you know, I just, I just want to know, if business people, if people in this town start standing up and saying no, is there going to be ramifications for them? Because that's one of the main things that, for me, is getting them involved with this, is that I don't want them to be afraid of making that choice, because it's their choice. This is a free enterprise economy. They can choose to feed their family, they can choose to fill their business, we have the right to peaceably assemble, and that includes being inside of a business. So I'm just very confused as to what we're doing, because it's really aggravating.
So I guess the response I'm going to give to you is one that those who've been in this chambers have heard before. To date, the city of Yuba City has not written one single citation or anything to close a business, okay? What we have done is we have worked within the framework to try to keep all of our businesses open, understanding that some of those businesses are impacted by decisions or choices or laws or regulations or licensing that comes from the state of California, which are completely out of our control, okay? So at this point, while we feel the pinch of some businesses having to follow those edicts or laws, guidelines, et cetera, at the same time, they're not, they're not being enforced by this city. And each one of us up here, we have, we may have slightly different opinions, but as a group, we want to see our businesses thrive here because we want our people to have jobs, we want the business owners to make a living, et cetera. So we're not doing the things that I think you think we're doing or may be doing, okay?
No, Roger that. I just wanted to get clarity on it, you know, before we really truly embark on this project that we're working on.
Sure. And again, I would certainly invite you to speak with the city manager and get involved with our business retentions task force, because it sounds to me like you guys are moving in a similar direction.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other comments from the audience? Sierra?
No public comment.
We will move on to item number three, which is public communication, the appearance of interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email. Consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in our council chambers. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or if you've been exposed to COVID-19. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? I'll start with the audience. Anything you wanted to chat with the council about that's not on the agenda?
I'm Sharon Cheek. I just have a question. I saw that, you know, social distancing is supposed to be six feet, but then I've seen recently that for schools, they've changed it to three feet? So is that the new norm?
Well, it is for schools.
So it wouldn't imply in here?
Well, I think you see people closer than six feet. I don't, I don't mean to sound flippant, but...
No, I was just curious.
Jason Con, Yuba City. I just want to go off what Sammy was speaking about. Yes, we, we are a little tired of everything with the COVID and the mask and going to certain stores, and some people fight you, some people don't. And yes, Mary, you're, you're right. You guys have stood up in certain aspects, but you're wrong. We are divided from the state, and you guys can't fight the state and put a wall up. So in an aspect, you're right in some aspects, but you're wrong in another. So please don't use that, saying we haven't written any fines, which is true and correct, but don't say that these businesses have shut down because of the state, because you have allowed it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
You know, my name's Robert Cheek. I'm a business owner here in Yuba City. As far as the businesses being shut or closing their doors, I think Yuba City has been a very safe place, because my wife and I have traveled the country. We've gone from state to state, and we've refused to wear masks from the very beginning because I've worked with people in labs that they test their employees' masks because they're exposed to toxic substances. And they said that people that wear masks, that their bacteria level in the mask is off the chart. That's what's making them sick. We have not been sick. I am a heart patient, I'm overweight, and I have asthma, and I have not been affected by COVID. And like I said, my wife and I have traveled all over the country. And like he was saying, the conservative states that are open, they're great. Yuba City is a great place to be, but I think you guys could help the businesses that are afraid to be open by giving them some guidelines as to you can open, you're safe, you won't be ticketed by us, because there's a lot of restaurants in Yuba City that they're not even wearing masks, even their employees are not wearing masks anymore because they know this is just a sham. And I think everybody here knows it's a sham, too. That's all I have to say.
Getting pretty good about hopping over those chairs.
So as far as the schools, is that a county thing?
The schools are a separate public entity of their own, so they...
So there's no control that we have over the schools?
Not from the city, no, sir, not one.
Oh, that's terrible.
I'm Sandy Drown, and I own a local business here, and I just wanted to welcome the new faces here. I always loved it when people use their voice. But I just wanted to thank, the city has been very instrumental in keeping our business open and supportive and educating us. And on behalf of the downtown, as president of the Downtown Business Association, our businesses have felt that support from our county and from our city. So maybe there might be some businesses that are afraid to move forward because they're going to have some guidelines or some negative impact on that, but I would definitely encourage them to reach out to the county and to the city. And once they have that conversation, they'll feel a lot more confident with what they're doing so that... But anyways, I just wanted to thank the city for making sure that we could stay in business and thrive and employ, and keep our 45 employees employed. So thank you.
Thank you. Last chance. All right. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these items? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Nobody in the audience? Sierra?
No public comment.
All right. Back to the council, consideration on the consent calendar.
Through the mayor.
Okay.
Move to approve the consent calendar items four, five, six, and seven.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, a second by Councilmember Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any...
We have to do a roll call.
Through the mayor, I'm so sorry, we have one council member that is not present, so we need to have a roll call.
Okay, I will do that then. Sierra, please.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Espendola?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
And Mayor Boomgarden?
Aye.
All right, next item that we'll discuss, item number eight, is business items. This will be the 2021 Water Smart Grant, Small-Scale Water Efficiency Projects for Water Treatment Plant. This will be presented by our Public Works Director, Diana Langley.
Good evening, mayor and council. So I have the next three items before you tonight. So the Public Works Department has prepared an application for the Bureau of Reclamation's Water Smart, Small-Scale Efficiency Grant. We utilize the 2019 Water Master Plan to identify potential projects, and we're proposing the replacement of split-case pumps at two booster stations and the soft-start systems at the booster pump stations near the Harder and Sanborn tanks. Here's a couple of pictures. So the Bureau of Reclamation requires a resolution by city council to, for the grant application to be considered, to designate who's able to legally sign the application, providing support for the application, affirming the city's capabilities to provide local funds, and then also committing to working with the Bureau to meet the deadlines. Staff is recommending to designate the Public Works Director as that individual. Alternatives are to not support the grant application or to designate a different official, such as the city manager. And so the recommendation is to, is up here on the screen, requesting that council adopt a resolution.
I was thinking that was going to go longer, sorry.
We're making it very brief tonight.
All right. Before we go to public comment, any questions from the council? Mr. Kirchner, questions? All right. Have any comments from the public on this? Sierra?
No public comment.
All right. In preparation for a roll call vote, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to sign the letter of intent to work towards the consolidation of the Yuba... On the right one, right? Yeah. Yuba Apartments Homes, 3863 Cloosa Highway Water System with the city's...
On the wrong one.
That's what, I thought I was reading the wrong one, that's why I was, I'm like...
When they all start out, adopt a resolution, it's hard to figure out which one's, it is.
Went to the... Someone else make the motion at this point, thank you.
Through the mayor. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the Public Works Director to enter into agreement, designating Public Works Director as the official who has reviewed and supports the application submitted. Capability the city has to provide the amount of funding or in-kind contributions as specified in funding plan, and the city will work with the Bureau of Reclamation to meet establishment deadlines to enter into grant or cooperative agreement.
Second that one. I'll defer to councilman.
Okay, you guys are going to confuse me here. All right, we have a motion by the vice mayor, a second by councilperson Kirchner. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
Councilmember Espendola?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Moving to item number nine, pretty exciting one for us, a Bridge Street Widening Project.
Sierra, could you please pull up the next presentation? Thank you. So this is an exciting one, the adoption of SEQA for the Bridge Street Widening Project, another milestone for this project. So as you all know, we're proposing to widen Bridge Street between Gray Avenue and Cooper Avenue, and as, we were fortunate to receive money through the California Transportation Commission for $2.8 million to help fund this project. In order to put, place this on the May agenda for the CTC for allocation, we need to be able to provide that the environmental document has been approved by council. And so Yuba City was the lead agency for SEQA compliance. We contracted with Provost and Pritchard in May of 2018 to prepare the initial study/mitigated negative declaration. The ISMMD was filed with the State Clearinghouse on December 7, 2018, and circulated for public review through January 7, 2019. We did receive comments from the Federal River Air Quality Management District and the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. We also consulted with the Native American tribes as required by Assembly Bill 52, and mitigation measures were included in the ISMMD to address all comments. It should be noted that the project is not anticipated to result in any significant impacts. So an alternative is to not adopt the ISMMD, we don't recommend that. We would like you to proceed forward with adoption, and then that way we can take this item to the CTC in May so that we can finalize getting that grant. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Kirchner? Seeing no questions? Any comments from the public in the audience? Yes?
Hi, yes, my name's Heather Esmond, I was wondering, this project, I believe several years ago was supposed to have started by March, and I'm not sure what the delay was. Is there any explanation as to...
So we have, you know, this project's been a long time in the making in terms of acquiring all the properties on the north side. We then prepared a design, and then last fall, we came back to council because we had worked with a consultant through a grant through CACOG that reevaluated that design for us and came up with some recommendations to modify the design to make it more appropriate with the neighborhood. And so with that, we went back and modified it a little bit to provide more of a buffer between the travel lanes and the homes to try to put measures in place to help reduce the speeds through that section. So we've gone through that process of updating the plans, and then also in addition to that, we applied for the CTC grant. And so we were waiting to see if we were going to be awarded the CTC grant. And so we're very happy that we were awarded the CTC grant because that will help pay for about half of this project. So there's been several things that have kind of led us to this point, and also I just want to, you know, to manage expectations. As we move forward with this project, we, you know, we received the final authorization for the CTC grant. Most likely, we would be bidding this project later in the fall to try to capture the best bid rates as contractors are trying to schedule their work for the next year. And so depending upon whether it's a wet winter or a dry winter, you could see some underground construction activities start, or you could see like the block wall along the north side of Bridge Street start. But the true road construction, where you're really getting into the depth of rebuilding the road, I would not expect to see start until next spring, just because of the duration, the amount of time it's going to take to do that rebuild and having to move traffic over from one side to the other. And that's, that's not an operation you want to start and then have to stop midway. So in all likelihood, completion of that project at best would probably be the end of 2022, and, and that's assuming that we're bidding this fall.
Appreciate that update. Any other comments from the audience? City clerk?
No public comment.
Before we go for the, the roll call vote, I just want to make sure that, appreciate getting the extra time to have the consultant talk about the different features that were possible over there. I think that at the end of the day is going to be, make for a better project overall. And I also, you know, huge congratulations on the, on the grant funding. I mean, that's, that's 2.8 million bucks.
That engineering team's been hitting it out of the park in terms of getting grants lately.
Yeah, they sure have.
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel?
Let me try this one again, thank you. I move to adopt a resolution adopting the initial study mitigated and negative declaration for the Bridge Street Widening Project. I think I have the right one now, yeah.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion by Councilwoman Espendola, second by Councilwoman Harris. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Espendola?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Item number 10, Yuba City's Groundwater Sustainability Agency Agreements for Developing Sutter Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan.
This is just as exciting as the title sounds. So in 2014, the legislature passed groundwater legislation collectively known as the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or as we affectionately call it, SIGMA. And so with that, I have to say that the local agencies within the Sutter Sub Basin have been working collaboratively to address this requirement for a groundwater sustainability plan. There's, there's been a lot of iterations along the way in trying to submit an alternative plan, which DWR ended up rejecting, which has forced us to move towards this plan. But with that, this plan is due January 31, 2022. Here's a list of the participating agencies that are considered groundwater GSAs. And so we are partnering with Sutter County, Live Oak, Butte Water Agency, Sutter Extension Water Districts, Sutter Community Services, Reclamation District 70, Reclamation District 1500, and Reclamation District 1660. So this plan will help determine groundwater management within the sub-basin. You know, we consider the groundwater situation to be fairly stable within the basin, but it still requires that we prepare the plan. We benefit by, we do use a groundwater well as a backup at the water treatment plant in this year because of the, the dry conditions that we're experiencing. We're anticipating having to bring that well back on operation to supplement our surface water supplies. And so we do have a, an active role in this plan, and we will benefit from it. The cost allocation is based upon acreage within the basin, and we're a very small amount of that, and so our share is approximately $4,505. Council could decline to participate, we don't recommend that because then we don't have a seat at the table in terms of the preparation of this plan. And so the recommendation is to approve an MOU among the Sutter Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agencies and approve an MOA regarding funding commitments for the development of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Nope. All right. Did you want to take just a quick moment to talk a little bit about maybe what's going on with water delivery for the city?
I can, but I do have a presentation scheduled at the next council meeting to go into a little bit more detail, but I would like to take this moment to acknowledge Kathy Willis, our Regulatory Compliance Administrator, who has been the one that's been actively involved in this specific item. And so I just want to give her credit for her work, and, you know, she also prepared the staff report, and so I'm very appreciative of her efforts on this item.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll wait for your news on water delivery till next time. Any comments from the public?
No public comment.
Okay. City council? I'll go ahead and move to approve staff's recommendation, please.
Second.
I have a motion to approve staff's recommendation by Councilperson Harris, a second by the vice mayor. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Espendola?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
And Mayor Boomgarden?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously, and we move to item number 11, city sponsorship requests. We have Mr. George Barlow.
Thank you, mayor, councilmembers. My name is George Barlow, administrative analyst, working for the city manager in the city manager's office. Based on our community sponsorship policy, I'm bringing forward tonight staff recommendation on two in-kind community sponsorships. First, we have a $1,173.67 in-kind sponsorship for the Touch a Truck event that is put on on April 24 by the Plazium Yuba Sutter. This in-kind amount is based on the TNE costs associated with one street sweeper and employee and one reserve fire engine and employee during the duration of the event. I don't see Stacy Howell here, but I'm sure if you have any questions, I can help answer those. Second, we have a $466.44 in-kind sponsorship for the Spring Festival event. That event will be on April 17, put on by the Downtown Business Association. This in-kind amount is for Public Works Street closure that will be tear-down and, and put-up. Attachment C on their application of the staff report, the DBA has also requested to utilize the funds that were previously approved by council in November of $10,500 for the Christmas stroll for the Spring Festival. Sandy Drown is in the audience today, so I'm sure she can answer any questions. Physical impact would be the in-kind amounts, $1,173.67, the in-kind to Plazium, and $466.44 to in-kind to the DBA. The current available balance for the community contributions and community events would not be reduced because these are in-kind amounts. Staff recommendation is for council to consider the in-kind sponsorship requests from the Plazium Yuba Sutter and the Downtown Business Association. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
No questions, only comments.
No comments, excuse me, no questions?
Questions.
Comments from the audience? Okay, nothing coming, nothing coming from the audience, all right, back, oops.
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, back to the council then.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like Ms. Drown to read her notes there for us so we can hear, see exactly how well-prepared she was. No. Think these are great, you know, we've talked about this for a year, getting back to a sense of normalcy. The Plazium's Touch a Truck is an awesome program for the kids every year. Glad that we can be a part of that as a city and our partnership with the DBA. I'm so looking forward to the summer stroll. So we've tried, and we've tried, and we've thought outside of the box many times over this past year. So wholeheartedly, I think you'll find that we're all on board, so.
Okay, thank you. George, thank you for the report, I forgot to do that, wanted to acknowledge you for that. Any other comments from the council? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Through the mayor, move to approve.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to sponsor the two, the two events.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Councilman Kirchner, second from anyone?
Yep, second.
Okay, and a second by Councilman Harris?
Through the mayor?
Yep.
Can we clarify that? It's three items, three items, not two? To make sure we got them all.
It's three?
Well, it's, it's on the...
There's two in-kind and, and one cash and carryover. You met all those, Councilman Kirchner, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Second, second.
A second, second's been given? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Espendola?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. As mentioned earlier, we are continuing item 12 to the next meeting. Item 13, Assembly Bill 1209, Green Means Go Grant and Loan Program is presented by our city manager, Mr. Dave Vaughn.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to invite Mr. Moody to the podium to talk about the details of the efforts that have been going on between us and the Sacramento Area Council of Government's staff, as well as recognize that Councilmember Harris is also a SECOG director, and he can speak a little bit to the efforts and focus on this particular support bill that's going to focus on infrastructure and infill needs within our region.
All right, so good evening. I'll try my best. There's a lot of acronyms and terms in here and how I simplify it, but basically the Green Means Go is a pilot program initiated from SECOG, our regional metropolitan planning organization. It's basically, it's a way to funnel state and federal money into our region. And so through the Green Means Go program, it really was an initiative to meet state regulations that are coming down regarding reducing greenhouse gases. And so the state has set this limit that says, hey, you need to reduce emissions by 18%. And what SECOG has done is they've jumped out and said, hey, we're going to do this Green Means Go pilot program. We're going to strategically focus where the funding goes for infill development and how to electrify trips in order to meet this state goal. But with that state, we want you to be a partner and give us money to help bring money to the region. And so with this, our assembly members have proposed a bill that will basically, they're requesting that that funds, the funding comes into this Green Means Go program. And so, but it really is, it's kind of California leading us with a carrot, and it's really, hey, here's the state regulations, and if you want funding, we need to start meeting some of these requirements. And so with that, our assembly members are requesting funding to come into this program and then allow us regionally to then focus how we use that money. And so they're asking for, I believe there's 23 agencies that have set up green zones is what they're calling them, and what you'll see come before you in the next couple of months is basically staff's recommendation on how we set up our green zones. Then they will leverage that for infill development and these funding, funds that are going to come through California into our region and then hopefully help build homes. So I, I'm sure Councilmember Harris could add to that, but that's kind of what it is. And so they're looking for our support to bring the funding into the region.
Well, that last sentence sums it up perfectly, yeah, and you did a good job. And everything Ben seems absolutely true. The intent of the program, of course, is to manage all the money that comes into SECOG, the federal money. Lot of money dispersed out all to municipalities in the region, but now we want the state to step in and help us. And we've had Senator McCarthy's been kind enough to author this bill, 1209, that will get more money into the program. We are working on establishing green zones here in Yuba City. The intent of the program, as stated well by Ben, was infill development, but also that needs to be supported by infrastructure. But infill development also gets people closer to town centers and centers of where people work and live and play. That will, the intent there is to get people out of their cars, get them more on the bike paths or on the sidewalks or the walking areas. Not only do they provide an enhanced sense of community, but it also reduces the greenhouse gas emissions. So there's multiple layers of benefit to the program. You're going to reduce blight if you can fill in some of these vacant lots or rehab different building areas. Again, reduce GHG and basically an overall good community benefit. But we do have a problem with sometimes our infrastructure is lagging because it's so dated. And so we could definitely benefit in that area alone, among many of the others, from this program. So I, of course, will be voting in favor.
All right. Back, any questions for Mr. Moody or Councilperson Harris?
Through the mayor, I just want to say, Councilman Harris and Mr. Moody, I think that the project is right on track to the discussion that the Richland Housing was talking about some of the same structural designs and environmental work that is helping to reduce some of the greenhouse, or excuse me, reduce the emissions. Well done. I think this is a good legislation to support, and I fully support it as well, Councilman Harris.
I just have one question. Will this bring the motorized scooters to downtown?
It will help.
Coming soon. Electric.
It will help, but you will probably see a lot of grant funding opportunities for anything and everything that aids infrastructure for infill and for those electrified and reduced trips. Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I can counter that, can I still drive my big diesel truck through downtown?
Yeah. You can't park it anywhere.
You can't park it there.
Just can't park it there.
Drive on around by.
On the sidewalk.
All right, any comments from the public? Any comments coming through the electronic world?
No public comment.
All right, back to the council.
My glasses, I'm not going to, I can't read the whole thing, but I would just move to approve recommendation. We support the bill.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Councilperson Harris, a second by Councilperson Espendola on item number 13. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Espendola?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Aye. That passes unanimously as well. We'll go to item 14, future agenda items. This is opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date. Are there any other comments relating to the agenda items that may have come in during the meeting? From the city clerk first?
No public comment.
Okay. Council, any future agenda items? Mr. Kirchner, we'll start with you. None? Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing none. Well, we'll move on to reports in communications. Following reports, communication items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on these items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. And first up is, tonight is Councilmember Espendola.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, I just want to clarify, I've heard from community members that sometimes they will not stay through the times that each of us report because it may come off as we're not, it may come off as we're bragging. I'll just say the word that was used. And I want to make sure that, at least from my point of view, it's, that's not the intent for community. It's the reason to report is just to show, hopefully, you know, let the community know the work that we're doing individually in our committee assignments, and then things that we may be doing individually. It's mostly just to share with the community for you to know what we're doing and working, hopefully, hard for the general all good of everyone, okay? So the community assignments that I'm on are the By County Homeless JPA, no meeting. I have a meeting on the Feather River Air Quality Management District, which is on Monday. It was rescheduled from this last Monday. The North Sacramento Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group is going to be meeting in several months down the road. I did attend the Regional Water Authority Special Board Meeting on Strategic Planning with Diana. Quite an interesting meeting. Talk about the number of board members, there's over 60 board of directors or something to that effect, and it was, it was, we learned a lot about the focus of the Regional Water Authority and the direction that it's heading here in the near future. So once that particular strategic plan is completed, then we can share that with the rest of the council. The Sutter Butte Flood Control Meeting is going to be next Wednesday, I believe, on April 14, and I'm the alternate on the others. I did attend, along with my colleagues, a special joint workshop planning commission with our commissioners and our colleagues on listening to the harder site specific plan. We also, I also participated with our city team, with Ben Moody's team and the mayor. We reviewed the CDBG-CV applications. We were the committee that reviewed that. I did have a meeting with our city manager, Dave Vaughn, and we're working on putting together the homeless workshop, so that's in the process. Mentioned earlier already, I just want to say it from my voice, I want to thank the city public works team for the amazing work that your team has been doing, Diana, in working on these grants and how it's just paying off all the hard work that's been done by your team, and I thank you for that. And also for Councilman Harris for his leadership on SECOG. He's been able to help bring in some of these funds and new projects and new plans, or plans that have been on the books, and he's actually helping bring these forward. So I just want to acknowledge you for that good work. Thank you so much. Some of the local community things that I was invited to, a local Indian American women who joined the Farmers Rally Against the Laws by the Prime Minister of India. So we had a rally that I participated with, and our city manager, Dave Vaughn, was there, introduced him to the group of women. There were over about 100 women. It was an amazing event, well-covered from Canada to India, from here in California. So such an honor to be there with many, many women and talking about the injustice of what is happening to small farmers in the country of India. I was also invited by Pastures Escobar from the Terroir Norcre de Adoración in a message of unity and community. And so I gave a brief update about the city news, and we talked about vaccinations. I am a supporter of vaccinations. I have been vaccinated. My family's been vaccinated. And as the mayor said earlier and others have said, I also believe that it's a personal choice of who chooses to be vaccinated or not. I respect that, but I also have experienced tremendous hardship with many family members. I've had, I've shared in the past, four members that passed away from COVID, and just about a month ago, or about four or five weeks ago, we lost another member from COVID. So we have five members in my immediate family that have passed on from COVID. So there's a strong personal experience that I have had in my family. And I also clearly want to say that in my, within my own extended family, we have our own businesses and deal with the same struggles that many other small businesses are struggling with. So I think it's responsible to do the right work to help small businesses stay in their jobs, retain, do their best, but I also want to keep, you know, people healthy and be able to make those decisions on their own. I've also been working and continue to work with some local small banks on helping financial support, in particular with business, small businesses of English or the second language. I'm noticing that they're still struggle with getting assistance with the PPP loans. So I've been doing some direct handing off to local banks that are assisting and seeing some success in that, so it's helping. I continue the discussion of broadbanding infrastructure needs with local community members, and I have two last comments that are just kind of feel the heart and the soul. Last month, we celebrated Women's Month, and to all the women that participated of our city, Sierra was instrumental in making sure that everything that we did in the month of March occurred because of her, and I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. We appreciate all the work that all the women do. Keep it up. The second thing is, March 30th was Cesar Chavez, the celebration of his legacy. The founder, along with Dolores Huerta, who I have, she's one of my role models. I have met her over the years several times, and extreme energy and just legacy. They formed the United Farm Workers of America, reminds us of the central place that organizing and collective bargaining holds in the advance of dignity and the well-being of working Americans. I believe strongly in that. I think that Cesar Chavez's work has been instrumental in helping move along the working class community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
All right, I was going to be brief, but I came up with a page of stuff, but I'll try to, I'll try to talk fast here. Primarily centers around the efforts at SECOG that the folks are doing down there. Grace mentioned some grants that we've gotten through then, 3.7 million for improvements on Walton, along with 300,000 for improvements in the part of, there's still some funding issues, but between Del Prado and Blevin out here on Butte House Road. That's two of them, but then we have through Caltrans, cities receive four Highway Safety Improvement Program grants, and a big shout out to Mr. William Zhao for his hard work and efforts he did on that. It was really a pleasure to read that email and appreciate the detail on that because it's, there's a lot of work that goes into these applications, and he did a great job. She doesn't want me to, but I'm going to thank Diana and also Kevin for their effort in that, too. I know you do definitely play a role, and it's much appreciated. And some discussions down at SECOG, rail is expanding. The plan to go north from Stockton up into Natomas, the first trips are planned, hopefully by the end of 2023, to extend rail service. We're also trying to get, well, actually, the network from Sacramento down to the Bay Area and Central Valley, but also there is some future plans to eventually go north up into Yuba Sutter area by rail. Not sure on the date on that, but it is pretty exciting, just to give commuters and day trippers an extra alternative to transportation. We're right back to GHG reduction and saving time and money and the environment on that. For down at CalCOG, we had the Regional Leadership Forum a few weeks ago, excuse me, a couple of weeks ago. It was an annual two-day event. And just reporting back on that, the themes that we often talk about here, reducing vehicle miles traveled, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, work with the feds for transportation infrastructure, our housing crisis, how to manage our REIT funds, and of course, keep in contact and try to meet with our RINA goals, that is not unique to here. I mean, it's all over the place. There's statewide issues and concerns. We also had, we have a working group at SECOG specifically, but also at CalCOG, the discussion of equality versus equity, trying to ensure folks who may have been disadvantaged unintentionally, perhaps unfortunately, sometimes way back when intentionally, because of some divisions, perhaps racial divisions. We're trying to combat those, had a discussion on that, how those concepts translate and then manifest by way of applicable policies. But one thing that was interesting that they brought up was the discussion of equality and equity is not necessarily on a basis of race, it's also based on rule versus not rule. Sometimes the rural communities, we happen to be at least semi-rural, we don't necessarily have the resources as some of the big cities do, and therefore they have a bigger voice when we have just as big a need, least proportionally. And so we're having a discussion about the, how do we even the playing field even based on that? So looking forward to more information with that. Statewide discussion, Highway 99, I bring that up because we have Highway 99 going through here. Discussion was primarily on the harbor and freight logistics, dealing with, again, the harbor, rail, and trucking, and how those three work together. That is it on that, and of course, we had a, I've been having local discussions with our Chamber of Commerce and the Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture regarding establishing a film commission and even a film festival here in Yuba Sutter. If anyone would be like to be, more information on that, I would love to talk about that. I have spoken briefly with the mayor, and it's a very exciting opportunity, a possible opportunity for our community to have a film commission. You bring folks in here for documentaries, for commercials, for music videos, for TV shows, for feature films, even short films. They bring crews with them, and they have to eat, and they have to sleep, and they have to buy gas, and they have to hire a local crew and things, and so it can only benefit us and highlight our community. So looking forward to being part of that, it's kind of exciting. Pleasure to attend the reception, welcoming Mr. Dave Vaughn as our city manager. And as I mentioned, I did a ride along with Gus from RHA. That is it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Kirchner?
Through the mayor. Thank you for letting me do this, do this virtual, appreciate that. I can't see the entire screen with the audience, but the general sentiment I got from tonight's discussion with the audience members is people are tired. They're tired of COVID, and I completely understand, and I think we're all tired. of COVID. And I definitely completely understand. And I think we're all tired. But we want what's best for our city, though, and to get our businesses open as quickly and as safely as possible. I received a phone call yesterday from one of my exchange students who lives and goes to school in Frankfurt, Germany. And they're under their third lockdown. There are no tier levels. They just they're locked down. And they don't have the access to the vaccines vaccinations that they do, apparently, in in our country. So it's also something to consider. But I want to I do want to thank our mayor for his leadership during this pandemic, and point out that I think he's he's done a great job with that. So moving forward on commissions, it's been kind of slow. As was mentioned before, on the 23rd, I attended the meet and greet for our fantastic new city manager, Dave Vaughn. Thank you for inviting me to that today, to that, Dave. On the 24th, as was was forward, we had a special joint workshop planning commission. A lot of exciting stuff going on in our town. And lastly, I got a privilege of being invited on a ride along tour with the Regional Housing Authority with Councilmember Harris and Gus, who was very informative. I learned a lot, and I was amazed by the demand for that, those types of services. And with that, I'm going to push it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Kirchner. Vice Mayor Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief tonight. Yuba Center Transit Authority met since our last meeting and finally started to move forward on site selection. The subcommittee that we set aside, Councilmember Harris is on. They chose a site, unfortunately, not within Yuba City. It's in Linda. But it is beginning to move forward because Yuba Center Transit Authority is going to have to build a new state of the art facility as Highway 70 begins widening and comes on into Marysville. Secondly, back to discussions we had earlier, that part of that project that the RHA showed, the 170 some odd units, part of that, they are seeking a grant from SAICOG as well to buy two buses for Yuba Center Transit. That would be zero emissions. So so that's kind of how things begin to work around here a little bit, the synergies. RWMA, the Regional Waste Management Authority, did not meet. Still in development of the JPA that would be brought forth. We were looking that that may be coming to the council late April, early May. It looks like that will be coming to the council closer to June. And looking to get that before all jurisdictions so that we would have something going into the next fiscal year. As we talked earlier, the mayor, you asked me to serve on the Business Retention Task Force. We've had our first meeting. Second meeting is in the morning. Look forward to talking to you afterwards tonight. I think you'll find that we haven't been asleep at the wheel as much as people think. And and you'll see that we're doing a lot of of things to keep the businesses. Because the design of that is really, we want to look at three questions. What are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? And what are we not doing that we should be doing? That's the gist of it. And as the DBA has already told us earlier, your council has been there standing in the gap the past year. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to support our businesses. So that one is coming up tomorrow. We've been continuing to work on the Master Tax Exchange Agreement. I'm hopeful, and I will leave it at that. We need to get the project done. Lastly, the development impact fees, we have already seen the impact that it's had. Mr. Moody can speak to that because we started a year ago in January, just before we all got told to stay home. And it was, you guys will never get it done in, you know, in a year. And we did the first wave in about three months. And that has sparked a lot of interest in this city. We missed it for about a decade by keeping fees too high and ignoring things. And the development just passed our city right by. So now we're playing catch up. But we've got a lot of good things in the hopper. And the mayor and myself has been working with Subufka. And at that meeting, I think we talked about that last time, as well as the Yuba City School District. And so looking forward to bringing back more positive things because we've got to continue to be open for business and grow Yuba City and grow it the right way. So that's basically it. Mr. Vaughn, great reception. Thank you. I attended the breakfast one. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for your, again, as Mr. Kirchner said, thank you for your leadership during this time.
Thank you. My turn. I'm going to talk about the city manager for a moment. He's probably not going to like this, but a couple of things. He he was invited to present this morning at the Chamber of Commerce's Governmental Affairs Committee meeting and did an excellent job. He flashed up a figure of how many meetings he's attended in his now 33 days, 32, but you said, I think, 33, whatever, 189 meetings so far. Go figure. You know, and and he also made a comment I thought was pretty good, which was, he's contributing to our water shortage because he's not only drinking out of fire hose, he's drinking out of a water main right now. So anyway, I just it's nice, nice to have you on board with us. I know that there's a lot of lot of stuff going on, and you're tackling that stuff. I do want to thank Peace Street Golf Country Club. They are the folks that are now running the city club, which used to be the city cafe. And they were gracious enough to host a meet and greet for our new city manager. And it was well attended, three different sessions. As for the Master Tax Exchange Agreement, we have proposed, received counter proposals, proposed, received counter proposals. Right now, we're awaiting some direction from the county on our last proposal back to them. We did meet with the developers and did spend a few moments just explaining to them from the city's position, you know, how we were coming up with with the things that we were interested in. And and that meeting went well. And I do, as as the vice mayor says, I'm looking forward to hopefully wrapping this thing up. It does need to get done. We you've heard about us talking about the Harder Project, Harder Project. We had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. That's all that area that is west of the Walmart complex. Looking forward to that. There's a lot of interest in in that development as well as Boke Store area. On development impact fees, we we continue to move in that direction. And to the vice mayor's comments, you know, staff has done a great job of taking in the abundance of new applications and interests that the impact fee reductions have resulted in. I do want to make sure that we message out completely that we're not doing this with the idea that we're going to disadvantage the city. The idea here is that we're going to strike the sweet spot that's between enough development to help pay for the services that that new development will require. I believe we were are able to do that. We are meeting with Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency membership tomorrow afternoon to talk about some potential reductions in their impact fees, which will, again, helpful be helpful to development. I do want to also mention, Councilwoman mentioned it, the Community Development Block Grant, COVID style. We had something like $2.4 million worth of requests that we had to cut down to 800,000. All the requests were worthy. And it was very difficult for us to make that recommendation. But that will be coming to the council, I believe, in the next meeting for approval. There are some really neat programs, and one that's kind of an innovative one that Councilwoman and I are going to present to you on on some housing things. Other than that, I do also want to share the the Councilmember Harris's excitement over the Film Commission. This is something that Marnie Sanders mentioned to me back a while ago. I do think there is, you know, this is this area has a history of attracting movie making. It's got some pretty unique features around here that that I think will generate some some interest. And I'm pleased that that, you know, we're moving in that direction as well. I think that's something that we'll need to keep our eye on going forward. Other than that, I wanted to do one thing I didn't do. Sorry. There's Ben back there, too. On the on the Community Development Block Grants is, thank you, you and Jaspreet, and the consultants and the rest of your staff. The outreach that happened this time was something that I think was way above and beyond which has happened in the past. And I think that knowledge out in the community probably drove a lot of those extra requests. You know, it has sort of a good and a bad. We got a lot of requests, but we have some interest. And that's that's good. That's the way that program should work is where it's out there. So to you and Jaspreet, thank you very much.
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
Correction, we will be bringing those forward on May 4, first meeting in May.
All right. I think that's enough.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add that George Barlow also helped out with that particular grant and reaching out to some of those. So just wanted to make sure that.
Thank you for reminding me. Yes, George, he's the keeper of the spreadsheet. And you can imagine how important that is. So I was, yeah, okay. Anything else before we close? All right. This meeting will be adjourned.